Turn this doggone phone down. My gosh, look at the stack of paper.
Question, sir?
Yes?
Are you invited at the time that the awards are given to one of the villain?
Who can?
Sorry, I apologize.
Okay.
I don't know, I really don't. I didn't set the trap, I don't have any clue.
My gosh.
Do you need a...
I mean, I just read it online, so... No, I just, I read the agenda all online, so I'll just use the webpage.
Okay.
That's what I did this weekend.
Oh, okay, alright.
Cool, yeah, I know the blue one's kinda interesting, but hey, it works. Okay, yeah, yeah, perfect. Thank you.
This is the breaking news. Posted two minutes ago.
What is it?
I tried to be kind on the radio. I just said a little bit too much for the play.
And this way, this way the board of supervisors directly and the C A O and keep an eye on it.
They have, so they want pre-screen.
Needs to be adjusted.
Their P M's employees while they're sitting in class. And then, I know, I know at the end of the academy, they don't have to come work for you, they can just say, "Yeah, I'll go to somewhere else." And I said, "Does your council know that?"
With the increased overtime.
Does your council know that, the people making the decision?
Race to pay.
So they lay out their whole...
Make people more efficient.
Council realize that these people don't have to work for the city as police officer. They can go anywhere.
Okay, we're ready. You guys ready? Yeah, yeah. Ready?
They can go anywhere.
Okay.
Unreal, unreal.
Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join me in the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and please be seated. Okay, we will start out with Supervisor Matters and we'll start with Supervisor Vanderpool and we will finish today with Supervisor Cox.
Okay.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Doesn't affect me at all, I'm first every meeting, so thanks for letting me know that for sure. First of all, I just want to congratulate our Assistant Sheriff Scott Logue on his retirement. What a fantastic career, thirty years with the county. And now he's off to further polish his golf game, which doesn't even need polishing, he's almost a scratch golfer as it is. But wish him the best and thank him for all of his work for Tulare County. And congratulate him and hope that he has a wonderful retirement. I'm gonna try to make his retirement celebration, but I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to. So I wanted to make sure I did that. And I also wanted to take my Board of Supervisors matters to thank Supervisor Cox. I really have enjoyed working with you, Phil. I think you've been an outstanding supervisor and your dedication to the county is second to none. You definitely have always prioritized the county, prioritized the kids in Tulare County. Your responsibility, your fiscal responsibility and definitely doing your due diligence and homework for every meeting that you go to is certainly gonna be missed. I know that nobody could slip anything by Phil in the agenda. Even when the agenda item was two hundred pages long, there was one guy you could always count on to read all two hundred pages and every single word on those two hundred pages. And that was definitely Phil. He's been a tremendous asset to this county, been a strong and steadfast fiscal steward and he's definitely gonna be missed on this board. And I've enjoyed the eight years that I've gotten to work with you and learn from you and hope that... I know you're not going too far. The county seats in Visalia and you're joining the Visalia City Council and so best of luck from that perch and I know that you will continue to impact the residents of the district and city and county that you serve and your programs that you've implemented here at the county will have a lasting impact. So, thank you very much Supervisor Cox and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you Supervisor Vander... Supervisor Worley?
Well, thank you. Before I forget about it, I have, and I put it on the front table there with a pen. It's a, we're trying to get signatures to encourage the governor of California to support the construction of Temperance Flat. I would appreciate each and every one of you if you have the time to come by and sign this. This is on behalf of the Latino Water Coalition. As happens tomorrow, a contingent of us on the J P A that are, have the responsibility of attempting to get funding for that project will be going to the governor's office. And it's very important for us to get the governor to support Temperance Flat because the appointees to the Water Commission who will be making the decisions on that, on the funding, are all appointed by the governor's office and so you might see a little bit of a correlation there. Last week we went up and the intent was to actually meet with the governor's office and the Bureau of Reclamation, but we had to reschedule, so we're meeting with them tomorrow. So instead, we spent eight hours on the road with a thirty-minute meeting with the Bureau of Reclamation. But it was a very, very good meeting. I too wanted to spend a few moments talking about my colleagues that are leaving and I realized that Alan will be at our next meeting, but the next meeting will be more focused on the seating of the new supervisors versus the leaving of the older ones. Twelve years ago, as I was on this board, two new people showed up. And getting here through the electoral process, but in very different ways. In the case of Alan Ashida, he was filling the seat of a retiring Supervisor Bill Sanders. And he had a large field, as is often the case, in an open seat of a number of people running for an open seat like that. And he cleared the field and came onboard and has been a force for good on the Board of Supervisors. At the same time, Phil Cox came on the board. His was a different situation, where he ran against a seated Supervisor who had been appointed by the governor to replace Bill Mazes when he ran for the Assembly. And that was a very heated conflict and Phil was successful in being the successful Supervisor. I can't tell you how many times I've heard Supervisor Ashida say, "When Phil and I came on the board, when Phil and I came on the board, and when Phil and I came on the board," I thought they had some kind of pact or something that they had signed before they came on the board. But actually, they were in alignment with the board and the boards of the past, which is to look out for the best interest of the people of Tulare County from the standpoint of efficiencies and good governance, open for business, improving our delivery of services and doing so in a very cost-effective manner. One thing I will say about Phil is that I thought he brought to the board a level of accountability that was a little bit different than we were used to. Some people might call it micromanagement.
Guilty.
You know, you're supposed to count to three on the board, Phil thought counting to one was adequate. But, I mean, it was really, there was a good aspect to that because I think that accountability was something that was needed in many cases. And he came with a perspective of somebody who, from private business, many years on the city council and a concept of what he wanted to accomplish and he set his mind to it and he was a stalwart in whatever he set his mind to do. Alan mentioned at his retirement party last week that the Step Up Program really was the creation of Phil Cox and he husbanded that program to the point that where it is today and we give him all the credit for that. But, yeah, we can applaud that. But anyway, in both instances, these gentlemen came to the board and they were fully prepared. They were not, they were new to the Supervisor seat, but they were not new in the standpoint. They knew their mind, they knew their heart and soul, they knew what they wanted for Tulare County. And over the years, they have helped this county to move forward, I think, in a very, very effective way. And so I personally would like to thank them for their years of service. One of the things that happens in a Board of Supervisors is that people come in as strangers, but they leave as friends. And so I will miss their friendship, not knowing that they're still gonna be friends when they leave, but that weekly interaction that we have grown accustomed to obviously is going to change. So, again, my thanks to both of you. Congratulations to you and to your future. Alan, good luck on the governorship. I know it's difficult to think about running for statewide office from a rural county in the center part of the state when you have opponents who will come from urbanized areas and large wallets, but best wishes to you and your efforts. Thank you again, gentlemen, for both of your years of service and God bless you. Thank you.
Supervisor Ashida?
Last week I attended the East Quoia J P A, which involves the groundwater management program. And I made it very clear that if you're in a white area, the county has jurisdiction as to what J P A that you could belong to. And if you decide to go into a different J P A than the one that wants you, that's your prerogative because it is voluntary. Saturday night, we had the big football game in Strathmore. Unfortunately, at the end, we lost by one point in the last seconds of the game. But those young men in Strathmore were superb football players. They had a great attitude and I was very proud to be an alumni of Strathmore High School. We had twice as many people in the audience as we have the population of Strathmore. I mean, people came from all over the state of California that had graduated from Strathmore to attend that game. So hats off to them and I hope Mr. Crocker will be able to bring the football team in front of the Board of Supervisors after the first of the year and recognize them. I wanted to mention a couple things about Supervisor Cox. Not only Step Up, but Phil and Ted Smalley wrote Measure R. They might have cut and pasted it, but they were the ones who put Measure R together and they put it together in a very short period of time. And we had several meetings about running that Measure R in the election and I was kinda on the fence and probably on the other side of the fence saying there wasn't enough time. But after hearing the consultant that we had that did the polling, it was very clear that off-year elections is very difficult to pass anything as like a tax measure. That convinced me and I'm sure other members of the Board of Supervisors and T C A G to go forward. Now, Phil was the chairman of Measure R when he wrote Measure R. I was the chairman of the board. Because we have overlapping chairmanships, that I was supposed to be the chairman of T C A G shortly after they wrote the proposition. And I got Phil to stay on for a couple more months to carry this thing through. Then finally, I think he just decided he had enough. So I was the chairman when we passed Measure R, but Phil did all the work on that. So when you ever think of Step Up and Measure R, it's definitely Supervisor Cox. And speaking of appointments the governor makes, we have so many issues with all these independent boards. Not only Water Board, we have the Air Board, we have Fish and Game. These are all appointments by the governor. And they've really have been a hindrance to good government. I have to leave early today to attend my aunt's funeral, so I will be leaving shortly. And I just wanted to let you know why I'm stepping out and that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, I think you guys have covered everything that I ever thought about saying about both these guys, but let me tell you, this is the only board that I asserted on, other than when Pete came on and took Connie's place. This is the only group that I have ever worked with. It's been a pleasure, let me tell you. We disagree sometimes, but we don't hold grudges. We get along. Very proud of the Step Up Program, Phil, that you put in place and Measure R. And I think the key to that Measure R, when they wrote it, was the fact they little piece of the pie for everybody. It was the bike people, the transit people, everybody had a little piece of the pie. And that's why it passed so well. It wasn't just about roads, it was about everything. So, great job on doing that. And Alan, I mean, shoot, we go way back.
You talk about me next week.
Okay. But anyway, Phil, it's been great. You are truly a steward of the taxpayers' dollars. I mean, that's the way I look at it. I think all of us are up here, that's what we're elected for. We take the amount of money we have and we use it to give the most services to our communities. And we don't go beyond that. We don't put ourselves out on a limb, we don't borrow a bunch of money. We make things, we make things happen with what we have. We stay within our limits. If only we could get the state and federal government to do that. I think it'd be a whole lot better place, but I think all of us have the same ideas. I think we have different ideas, but I think our number one concern is make this place, make this county, better place for all of us. You've done that. You've done that. So, with that, I'd just like to say congratulations to Strathmore High School team. I listened to that game and one point away from being the state champions. Unbelievable. Nobody else in this area has ever come that close. What a great group. Just wanna say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody and looking forward to next year and working and working with all of the different people within the county that make up our big county family that do give the services to everybody. Appreciate everything you do every day. So, with that, I will turn it over to Supervisor Cox.
Okay, well, thank you. I would, and I probably gonna take about at least ten minutes, so please indulge me. I've made some notes so that I don't forget things. I didn't write everything down because I think we'd be here for hours. Being a member of this board has been such a wonderful gratifying experience. First off, I would like to thank my wife Connie. In just a very few days, it will be thirty-nine years that we'll be married and very happy to have her as my main support. And I often tell people, if you see handprints on my back, it's because Connie's been pushing me. And she does push. She reminds me of things I ought to be doing, she reminds me of things I ought not to be doing, things I should say and then things I shouldn't say. She actually says more things I shouldn't say than anything else. But she's been with me, you know, the last, you know, sixteen years, actually eighteen years plus of holding public hearings, you know, and the difficulties that go along with that. She's been by my side and I wanna thank her for that. I first met Supervisor Ashida and his better half on the campaign trail some thirteen years ago. And Steve, yes, we did have a pact. You know, we, Alan and I were, saw eye to eye on several things. We knew things that we would like to see happen in the county. We were a little bit disenchanted with the level of customer service. I think this board addressed that with a strategic plan and I think we've done very well. All board members have been great to work with. We all have our different interests and we all work in those areas. And so it's been a lot of fun being on a diversified board. We're all type A plus, plus, plus personalities, so you would think there would be a lot of headbutting in the back hallways. There's not a lot, just a little bit, but it's been fun. Every minute of this ride has been fun. I do not, I'm not a person that likes to take credit for things that happen. Connie just said, "That's true," and she shook her head. See what I gotta live with? I just wanna talk about, you know, some of the things I've been able to be involved with and it's all possible because of this board. It's all, you know, you can't do anything. You can have a wonderful idea and unless, you know, I can count to three, by the way, Steve, it's that many. Unless you can count to three and get the support of a board, you're not gonna be able to do it. And so, as this whole board has come up with ideas of things we'd like to see happen, everyone has had those ideas or many ideas. We talk about those things and we're in agreement. Yes, we need to move forward with them. So some of the things that have happened over the last twelve years, you know, first I noticed that recognized as all of us did, we needed to change. We needed to have better customer service. We needed to, you know, have that mindset. We needed to be customer-friendly. And I looked towards R M A, who's pretty much led the way in that area. We started here in our office with a few people and it spread out from there. So we have people that love to do business in the county now. When I came onboard with Alan twelve years ago, people did not like our R M A. They did not like going to get a building permit, they did not like to get a special use permit. They did not like to have any conversations whatsoever in that Government Plaza building as we sit here today. People love to do business in Tulare County because Tulare County, as Supervisor Ashida coined, is open for business. The strategic plan was a great tool that we used to help shape attitudes in the county with county employees. One of the first things we, I did when I got here is I wanted to see what properties do we own? What buildings do we own? What are their values? And there was no list, nobody had a list of what we owned. So after a few months, we got that list and started talking as a board about that list of properties. What should we do with these thousands of properties, most of which we got as leftover pieces of right-of-way? Some of them big pieces of property. This board agreed to create a trust fund. So when a piece of county property sold, the money, the proceeds from that sale went into a trust fund. And the sole use for the monies in those trust funds were to purchase additional properties and/or build projects for the county, so county-owned projects. Another way besides the millennial fund to fund capital projects and land purchases. Been very successful. Without that, we would have not been able to purchase the Signa Building. There are not too many agencies that I'm aware of that can write a sixteen million dollar check and purchase a piece of property and this board was able to do that. All on the same page with that. I'm very, and was very excited when we started moving our Health and Human Service employees out of unacceptable working conditions. If you've ever been into the four-story annex on the corner of Center and Court Street in Visalia, you know it was deplorable working conditions. It was hot and, it was overly hot in the summer, overly cold in the winter. It was just not a pleasant place to work. Took a few years, I understand Bill Sanders actually took his desk down there one year and put his desk in one of those rooms by way of protest. I didn't go that far, I just said, "Let's get these people out of here and find a way to make that happen." So we've moved our, not only have we moved our Health and Human Service employees into better working conditions, we've moved them closer to their clients and made them more accessible to the public. Another thing I looked at when I got here, I drove out to Sequoia Field and thought, "My gosh, what a rat hole. This place is a dump. We ought to be embarrassed." I mean, and that's really what I thought. And started working with, at that time, Bill Hader. This board has been able to, without general fund cost, invest millions of dollars into Sequoia Field. You get a ninety percent federal grant, whether it's a million or ten million, and you have a ten percent match. Caltrans walks in and says, "Oh, we'll pay just about that whole match." So some of the improvements we've been able to do, or actually all the improvements we've been able to do at Sequoia Field have been at little or no cost to the county. Having the sheriff needing a place to park his toys. They have, you know, everything that they need to work in the winter in the snow, to work at the lake, to work in the back countries, do their search and rescue. It was parked outside in a big field and it was just deteriorating. And we were able to clean out one of those hangars that we were, I think we were getting forty-five dollars a month for a twenty thousand square foot hangar. We moved those folks into other areas and were able to put the sheriff in one of the hangars there with all of his toys and things that they needed that were literally falling apart outside. We created our own economic development branch. That was something I couldn't quite understand. Coming from the city Visalia twelve years ago, Visalia had a very active team that worked hard on economic development. Meeting companies that came in, that wanted, that were looking for locations in the area and were very aggressive and we pursued those companies. And at the county, I understand a fax went directly from the fax machine to a garbage can when we got those leads. So we've built a very active economic development branch now that includes several people and who would have known Eric Coyne would be on and on and leading that team. Has done a very good job. So we recognize people's abilities, their talents, put them in those places to work and watch them exceed. So not only are we drawing new businesses to Tulare County, but we're helping those that want to expand to be able to do so. We've now built a team of professionals to run our capital projects department. John Hess has done a wonderful job in that department. Having no construction background whatsoever, we, I think he got handed a trunkload of stuff and said, "Here, learn this," and he's done a wonderful job. That team is currently working on over a dozen projects valued at over a hundred million dollars. Now, those aren't future projects over the next ten years, those are projects today that they are working on today, over a dozen projects worth over a hundred million dollars. So my hat's off to that team. Alan mentioned Measure R. Actually, Alan, the consultant said, "Don't do it, the timing's not right." And nobody seemed to hear that except me sitting in that T C A G meeting and I thought, "Okay, the consultant says the timing's not right, we shouldn't do it." And Supervisor Worley and Supervisor Conway got into discussion between themselves, even though there were fifty people in the room, and said, "Yeah, that sounds great, we're gonna do it." And they led the way on that and I'm really proud of them for seeing that opportunity. Sometimes I say I got tossed under the bus. Well, actually, it was a Measure R bus, so it wasn't so bad. I hit over, we exceeded over a billion dollars in projects last year. What an accomplishment to be able to say, you know, because of that one measure, we've done over a billion dollars of projects. A lot of that money, folks, coming from the state and federal government. Something else that Allison Pierce and I were able to work on together, the Board of Supervisor interns. We had this idea to work with college students, those that needed to have intern hours in many college classes, graduates need to have those intern hours. Well, being the chief fiscal person I am, I said, "Well, let's get interns in here, but let's don't pay them. If they wanna work here in our office, we're not gonna pay them." So I arm wrestled with Rhonda Shustrom for about two hours and she agreed to find a way to make it happen. And so every, every year for the last several years, we've had at least one or two or even sometimes three unpaid interns in here. And in some of those cases, it's turned out really well for those interns. Of the eight or so that we've had, I know we have a few of those that are county employees. Samantha Frero in our office now was an intern, as well as Akira was an intern. So there's been some great success there and been really happy to have been involved with that. And my arm still hurts from wrestling Rhonda. Here recently, working with Pete Vanderpool on capital project team, just the last few months, we have literally slashed millions of dollars out of construction projects. When I say millions, I literally mean millions. Six, eight, $10 million have come off the, the bottom line of construction projects, which include new buildings, remodels. We've also moved the calendar up a year. Some of those projects would not have been completed till the middle of, end of 2018. By my calendar, they'll all be completed during the year 2017. So I think that has been a great model that this board ought to continue working with subcommittees in whatever area it may be. This one actually worked and it worked very well. Freeing up those millions of dollars allowed us to do the projects that we might not have been able to do because of the funding. One of the projects that you are, is underway is the property and evidence facility for the Sheriff's Department. If you didn't know, those folks are in some very old barracks out in Sequoia Field and sea trains. So they have evidence stacked in sea trains. Probably not the best place to keep them, but it's worked over the last 40 years or so that they've done that. This will be a state-of-the-art property and evidence facility that we should be able to partner with other agencies to help pay for that. Again, as we sit here today, fully funded, we'll be able to pay cash for that new building. The loop bus, when we first started the, the gang task force here in 2006, one of the things we came up with that children were needing, our young people were needing, was a ride to the Boys and Girls Club, a ride to the youth center, a ride to anywhere they were, they were stuck in their neighborhoods, they were stuck at their schools, not being able to get to youth programs. This board was very supportive and continues to be very supportive of the county's loop bus. We transport over 20,000 youth per year to after-school activities. I think this entire board ought to feel good about that because those youth are now, after school and even during the summer months, there with mentors, there with people that work with youth for a living and keeping them off the streets and, and out of gangs. Alan mentioned Step Up. You know, when, when Stephen Martinez was shot and killed in Goshen, he was from Ivanhoe, but he was shot and killed in Goshen. Alan and I talked about that. We both got mad. I mean, it wasn't a, you know, "We need to do something." It was, "We need to do something about this, and we need to do something now." Because we didn't want to see any more of our kids dying in the street. So again, with the support of the board, we have a very successful Step Up program now, which includes community events, a Step Up Challenge, which is a, a program for junior high and high school kids. The LEAD Program, which is a mentoring program for juniors and seniors in high school. Summer Night Lights that works countywide. This last year, we were in 15 locations and had tens of thousands of people come to those events, giving them a safe place. So far, Step Up has reached over 220,000 Tulare County citizens since we began. Now, that's a pretty impressive number considering we have 450,000 people in the county. I can remember when we were designing the Step Up logo, my goal was to make Step Up a brand, to have people in the county recognize the Step Up logo and know what that meant. Now, in many areas in the county, that has come true. So Connie read my notes last night and made me add a couple things. I didn't talk about our office staff here. The people that work in this office are some of the most dedicated people in Tulare County. They're dedicated, not just, just to coming to work on time every day and doing their job, but they're dedicated to the people. We're dedicated to each other here in this office. I have made friends for a lifetime here in this office. It has been, been a blast, even though we've had revolving doors over the 12 years where people come and people go. I really feel like I've made lifetime friends here, and it has been a pleasure working with the people on a day-to-day basis here in this office. They know who they are and they've been wonderful. So thank you for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I went for 16 minutes, I apologize. And this is about a fourth of it, you know? So many wonderful things have happened. I can point to programs such as our gang, the Gang Task Force, the Sheriff's Gang Unit with the DA and other agencies in it. A lot of things have happened. We've been a very proactive board. We've seen a need for something to happen, and we make that happen. It's been my pleasure to be a part of that. Been my pleasure to learn how to count to three, because Steve's right. When I ran my business for 25 years, I only needed to count to one, and that was me. I have tried to live by this motto that one of my sons found for me, and I've, I've kind of adapted it over the years to fit me. But the way I, and I put this, I think, in the last newsletter. We can build miles of roads, bridges and big buildings, but unless we've made this community a better place for our children and grandchildren, like Supervisor Ennis said, I have done nothing. And so I leave with my head high because I know I've made a difference here in Tulare County. I can look at the little things I've scratched on this paper and know that there are many more. And it would not have been possible without the support of a great team here on this dais, a great team in this office, and 4,500 other employees that we have throughout the county. They make things happen, and it's been a pleasure serving. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Come down and join me in the well, Phil.
Well, they're going down the well. When Phil and I came on board...
All right. The pact continues.
The board was recovering from a severe recession, and Phil and I knew that we were, that recession and the peaks would not last that long, so that's why we've been conservative. But the other part of Step Up's story that hasn't been told is, I did not know, as the chairman of the board, that Phil went to the CAO and wrestled $250,000 out of the C- out of the CAO's budget, the general fund budget, to start Step Up. So without his foresight of getting that type of money to start Step Up, it would probably fail, because as cheap as I am, I'd probably give him about $50,000. So, thank you for doing that.
Well, Phil, one thing I hate to see you leave, but you have 12 years of dedication to the county and to this Board of Supervisors, and as Mr. Maple says, the big coaster is on here. But appreciate all your efforts. Gonna miss you. I think Amy's got some big shoes to fill, let me tell you. She does, Phil. You've done an exemplary job. It's been a pleasure working with you as a part of this board and give you this plaque. I know it's, it's not enough to say how much we really appreciate all you've done, but 20, over 12 years is, is great. Now you've been on both sides. You're going back over, so hopefully we've got some friends over there in the Visalia City Council. Thank you, Phil.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have one other thing I would like to turn in my, to you, my letter of resignation, which becomes effective tomorrow at 4:00 P.M.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Okay, we will now move to public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board on matters affecting the board but not on our agenda may do so at this time. District Attorney Tim Ward.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tim Ward, your district attorney, Mr. Spata. I felt inappropriate to come before you today to talk about a couple of things, and in doing so, express the appreciation not only of myself, but retired District Attorney Phil Klein and the men and women in the office of the district attorney. It can be easily said, and don't start that clock on me. It can be easily said that the core function of what we do in the office of the district attorney is to serve and bring comfort to victims of crime. And not only the victims, but the witnesses and the families that are involved. And this board has really joined us in that mission. And if I may say so, Phil, I know that you, more than many sadly, understand the impact that crime can have on victims and families. This board has been steadfast in its commitment to our victim witness division, and in 2016, we've provided service to thousands and thousands of victims of violent crime. The number that is shocking is we've actually provided direct service to almost 800 child victims of crime. In 2016, we conducted well over 400 CART interviews. Those are the Child Abuse Response Team interviews of child victims and child witnesses. I made a commitment to serve our vulnerable victims when I became district attorney, and part of that was creating the Crimes Against Children team. But I'm here this morning, as I've done before, to introduce to you the newest member of the office of the district attorney. The newest tool that we have to provide comfort and really service to victims of crime, but especially those child victims and the child witnesses and the siblings that are too often drug into the process. So let me introduce to you Fortune, who is joining our staff. Fortune is a 15-month-old Great American Breed. Great American Breed is a Golden Lab and Golden Retriever mix. Fortune comes to us by way of Santa Fe, New Mexico, for a company called Assistance Dogs of the West. They, I'm happy to say, utilize veterans in the training and socialization of these dogs. And Fortune is named after Sergeant Maurice Fortune, who was killed in Iraq in 2004. He's an Army sergeant. We're happy to have Fortune on our staff. He's been with us little, about a week, and he's getting acclimated to our staff. But I wanted to bring him here today and introduce him to this board. You're the first public event that Fortune's gone to. It's only appropriate because without your support and support of Mr. Spata and the CAO's office, we would not be poised, as we are, to provide service. Fortune is coming through us by way of really grant money and the generosity and the vision that I had with Phil Klein and the Phil Klein Victims Trust, that's part of the Friends of Tulare County. So I wanted to, wanted to let you be the first to see, if you will, the fruits of your work and thank you for what you've done and will continue to do for those child victims that come into our office.
And which bargaining unit does Fortune belong to?
Well, he's quickly become the most popular member of our office without a doubt. But the great thing is Fortune does not draw a salary. So he, we are paying for the services, food, veterinarian bills out of some grant money and the Phil Klein Victims Trust, which is, if I may say, open to the public for donations as a chair of the board.
Great, great idea, great idea.
We have two handlers in the office. This is Jennifer Lightfoot. She's our Director of Victim Services. She's a trained handler. We also have another employee who's our CART interview specialist. She's trained by Assistance Dogs of the West as well. I would be remiss if I did not recognize a member of the audience who's sitting out there right now and probably getting slightly nervous. County Council, Jennifer Flores, who's out there. If you would stand up, Jennifer. Let me tell you, we would not be here today if we didn't have a lot of work from...
Did she leave?
The work that County Council's office did in helping us get a contract and let it suffice to be said that getting a contract to have a dog join your staff was, was interesting. So Jennifer, thank you for what you've done. So with that, we'll probably be having some future public events to allow more socialization, allow the different departments to come in and meet Fortune in our office. He's working already. We were, he was in CART interviews yesterday with some child victims. So I wanted to say thank you, and I wanted to let you see directly the fruits of, of what you and, I guess, we together collectively can do. So thank you for your service.
I have a question.
Sir?
What's Fortune do on Saturday?
What does, Jennifer, what does Fortune do on Saturdays?
Fortune retrieves every shoe out of my house and puts it in the kitchen.
I'm going duck hunting.
When, when Fortune takes his vest off, he becomes, you know, just a, a normal member of Jennifer's family. But when the vest is on, make no doubt about it, he is a working service dog, so.
Well, we, we need to know what kind of treats he likes. Maybe the board can send some treats and stuff over to him.
We could make that happen, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good program. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And bet rollers as well.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, members of the board, Mr. Spata. As my retirement party, I'll take Fortune. I wanted to just briefly thank you and acknowledge that I have been able to have the good fortune to spend 20 years, the last half of my career, with Tulare County. And it has been my delight to work directly for you as the Director of Health and Human Services Agency for the last five. You have provided consistently strong leadership. You've provided consistently strong guidance. You've provided many laughs. You have provided assistance on too many projects to name, but I want to thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Spata and his office for guidance and support. That has certainly not gone unnoticed. I'm very appreciative, as is the agency. So as I go, I know I'm leaving you in very good hands. Currently, our Associate Director, Jason Britt, our Branch Directors, Tim Durick, Timothy Lutz, Juliette Webb, all very strong leaders. So I know I leave the agency in the best of hands. Thank you.
A minute, Cheryl, I've got something for you.
Chairman, while you're going down there, I, I know probably other members would like to say something too. You know, Health and Services is sometimes thought of as sort of an orphan in the county world because it's a subvented program, so...
We occasionally feel like that. Not, not most of the time.
Let me get this, I'll, I'll try to bring it around to full circle because, you know, the idea that the money comes from state, federal dollars to provide services to the people of our county. And, you know, we say, we try to provide the very best level of service that the state and federal government can afford to provide, because we're using their dollars to provide those services. But what I wanted to say, and Cheryl, you have just been the epitome of this, is that you are true partners in all county affairs. You have stepped up in your department in so many ways to help things happen in this county that would otherwise not happen. With the limitations of general fund dollars and so forth, it's your dollars that we can put with general fund dollars to accomplish so much in terms of buildings and improved working conditions. And I, I can remember times when the county was really struggling financially, and just your castoffs in terms of equipment and so forth that we could turn on and repurpose in general fund departments was a real godsend to the county. And so I want to thank you personally and your department for truly being a part of Tulare County. being a part of Tulare County's family. And we don't get the complaints from people who service, you service like we do from the RMA folks, but you serve a very, very important service in our county, dealing and helping people who are at the very most vulnerable points in their lives, children and adults. And I just want to thank you for your service. And we wish you well.
Thank you.
For retirement.
Mr. Chair, before you give her the giant coffee coaster. Cheryl, you have been just a pleasure to work with. Someone that I can go to and been able to confide in and to talk with. And I guess not at a professional level, but on a professional level, if you know what I mean. But you have been great to work with. When, it's been a few years ago, I handed you about three pages of a list saying, this is where I want you to, to, you know, help us out with our step-up program. You didn't say, no, we can't, no, we're not going to do it. You said, okay, let's look into it and see what we can do. And the partnerships that were created with certain divisions within the Health and Human Service Agency, I know that was because of your direction. When you see something's the right thing to do and it's, and it needs to happen, you've made it happen regardless of, of whether it was done before or not. So you being able to have the right team players at the, at the meetings, and you being the, the leader of this wonderful team have been very appreciated by me. I know there are a lot of things we not have been able to do with the step-up program countywide, had it not been for your partnership. And we know that the guidance and the leadership comes from you. So thank you for your many years of dedication. The last five years have been an absolute pressure, pleasure. I know you do know how to say no, and you have said, said no before. But it's great when someone says, you know, let me get back to you on that. Let's work on that and see what we can do. And you have a can-do attitude, and I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor.
You want to say something, Alan? You're leading.
You go first, and I'll go last.
Okay. All right, I will. Your, your district's before me, so I thought I'd offer District One to go first. Dr. Dirksen, it's been a real pleasure working with you. I know that you were one of the first county employees that I even got to work with when I got on the board, when I got assigned to the Mental Health Board. You were then the Mental Health Director. So I got to interact with you on a, on a regular basis and learn such things as how to judge a mental health board member's behavior that day based on their hairstyle when they showed up to a meeting. It was, it was very interesting. You did a fantastic job and...
Somehow I knew you were going to do it.
You knew that was going to come up. You knew that was going to come up. But no, it's just, it's been really great. I, there's very few people that have been so willing to make themselves available to help find solutions, to be communicative about issues. I've really enjoyed the, the quick email, hey, you got time for a cup of coffee? And we'll, we'll talk about whatever issues may be going on. And, and I just really appreciate your dedication. It's not just to the county. You really do have a passion for those that you serve. You have a passion for your subject expertise. You have a passion for the agency. You're not just walking out and saying, hey, I put in my 20 years, I'll see you later. What you're doing is you've put a team in place that can carry forward a very complex agency that accounts for nearly half of the county's workforce and function within your shop. And I really appreciate that forward thinking. And I feel very confident that you're leaving a team in place that's going to keep that agency carrying forward your vision while adding to it and hopefully making it even better, which is hard to believe because you've done such a fantastic job. But thank you for your service. May the best years of your life be ahead of you. And I hope there's lots of stray cats you'll be adopting and taking into your home.
I am not even going to comment.
Alan, before you go, that, what he said reminded me of something. You're loving this, aren't you? This, this is great.
Yes.
I, I can remember one time, there was an art show, and I can remember standing there with, with Dr. Dirksen in the, in a near proximity. And, and she ran into me and, and she like grabbed onto me and like, like she was tucking herself behind me. I'm like, what is wrong? And she goes, see that guy over there? I think he wants to kill me. And so she, she shoved me in between this guy and herself. I just remember when you, when you talked about the hairdo, it reminded me of the time you used me as a shield.
There was plenty of you.
Yeah?
I first met Dr. Dirksen 12 years ago when Conway put me on the Mental Health Board. And I put Pete on the Mental Health Board. But, but it gave me an awareness of the mental health issue that we have, not only in our county, but in the nation. And from that awareness of four years serving on that board, we haven't done enough. And we do need to do so much more. During that time when I was on the board, they passed, I believe, Proposition 63, which gave us more leeway to do things differently in mental health. And one thing we did do is we went to the nonprofit private sector to offer, have them offer the services through us. I mean, through them, we'd offer the services. And that was the beginning of us starting to reach out more to the nonprofits to provide a lot more services than we had been providing before. And I think as a result of that, I, I think that the clients got a lot more service than they ever had before. So I remember when I started, the Director of Human Health Services, that would have never happened. These, Human Health Services was an empire. And we've kind of broken up that empire, and we've taken some things back in and made them larger. We've, we've moved other things out to the, the nonprofits. But it's been a pleasure to work with you over the last five years as Director, because I don't think I've gotten a call in about five years. Because you've done such a great job. And I also echo the fact that you have a great leadership team that you're leaving behind. We've worked with them for many years, and we're very confident that they'll continue with the professional performance that you've done in this position. And I wish you the best luck too. I guess a lot of us are going to pasture.
Yeah.
So it might be crowded.
I don't know about the pasture, but I...
I'm going out to a grove, but there are going to be a lot of us out there. So thank you Cheryl for all your, your efforts. And what a great job you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Dirksen. As you are about to approach the other podium where you will be given the tribute and recognition of this county, its highest award, I wanted to, and by the way, that award is so richly deserved for you, I just wanted to very briefly say a few words. I want to thank you for your leadership, your transparency, your integrity, your hard work, can-do attitude, and commitment to performance, all within a very personable demeanor. And I also want to thank you for enduring the many incidents of cross-examination in the, in the corner office, and you did superbly well.
There were, there were one or two.
And I want, I want to thank you for that. And in sum, may I say, as you go off to a wonderful retirement, to me, you represent a leader's leader. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
But anyway.
Supervisor Vanderpoel made that.
Yeah. But anyway, in appreciation of your 20 years of service to the county, the big coaster. But we do appreciate what you've done, and you certainly have assembled a good team. The key to any, any good functioning group is the foundation, is the team you put in place. It makes your job easier, and it, it, it helps the county get the services out to the people they need. But Cheryl, thank you so much for your years. We're going to miss you. And I know Jason's going to do a good job, and your staff will continue on. But thank you for your years of service. And I never did really get to get with you on your times and trials at Corkford Prison, but I imagine you could tell me...
That's, that's a good thing.
Yes, you could probably tell me some good stories. But anyway, Dr. Dirksen, I'm just going to call you Cheryl. Appreciate your years of service, and we are going to miss you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else wishing to speak during public comment? They do so at this time? Seeing none, we will close public comment. We will move to our consent calendar. Any items that...
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to remove, I'm trying to see what item, I'm in a different format right now. I'd like to remove the item for, it's item 22, like that, just brought for separate consideration after we take the balance of the consent.
Okay, are you making a motion then?
Yeah. Actually, do you want to make a motion, Phil?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
I want to give you a chance, your last consent calendar.
Oh, there will be many more. Motion approved, consent calendar, less item 22.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Worthy. Cast your votes, vote unanimous. Item 22. San Juan King Valley Insurance Authority.
Good morning Chairman Ennis, members of the board. This is our request, I'm sorry, Rhonda Schustrom, Human Resources Director. This is a request to amend a previous agreement between the County of Tulare and the San Juan King Valley Insurance Authority that would provide for an additional $2 million in a authorizing advance of cash or line of credit to the SJVIA. Previously, your board authorized a $2 million line of credit, which has been drawn down by the SJVIA. And this would authorize up to an additional $2 million. The County of Fresno authorized an additional $3 million last week. Unfortunately, per the SJVIA auditor this morning and looking at the cash situation of the SJVIA, he is going to be requesting that the County of Fresno transfer the $3 million funds in this next week to the SJVIA to help with anticipated cash flow issues. And that is the request before you for an additional $2 million to help with the cash flow that we're anticipating for our regular claims that are coming in, as well as for anticipated runout from those entities that have left the SJ, or will be leaving the SJVIA come January 1st, of which we will no longer be receiving revenues or premiums, but which we will still be on the hook, so to speak, for the claims runout, the majority which should come through March of 2017. And we are anticipating about a $2.3 million impact to the SJVIA from the 18 entities that are leaving as of January 1st.
Thank you, Rhonda. Appreciate that report. I just wanted to bring this item to be considered separately because I think it's a, it's a very important item. And I know that Fresno County and Tulare County first formed the SJVIA in the interest of providing somewhat stable premium adjustments on a year-to-year basis back in 2010. And we've come upon some difficult times, but I think that the county stepping up to do this, it is for our employees and for the insurance coverage. I think that we're doing the right thing, something that we've been a true partner with Fresno County in doing. But I, I have to say that something had, had to change with the SJVIA in order for that organization to be stable going into the future. And I think we are in the process of making that happen. Last week, we had the opportunity to interview our own, or interview consultants with the SJVIA. And I think that there's some, some fresh blood in there amongst the candidates, candidate consulting firms that can really bring some real advantages to the SJVIA. And so I'm optimistic that there are better days ahead. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Ashida. Cast your votes. Vote is four to one with Supervisor Cox voting no. Thank you.
The chairman, 38?
Yes, that's what we're going to do. We're going to move to item number 38 out of order because Supervisor Ashida is going to have to leave early. So 38 is on the untimed items. Request from the County Administrative Officer to establish the Department of Registered Voters.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Member, C.O., Mr. Spata, and Council. I'm Sophia Almanza, Deputy C.O. for Budget and Finance. Today I will be presenting the reorganization of the Register of Voters. This is a brief overview of the presentation. We will start with introductions and the right to vote. We will go into establishing the Department of Registered Voters, and with the establishment, the fiscal impact, and the appointment of the interim Register of Voters. I will touch on the strategic management review and its linkage to the strategic business plan. Then the acknowledgements, and then finally, the requested actions. The right to vote. The right to vote is the most cherished value enshrined in our constitutional system of a democratic government. Viewed practically, this means every vote counts, and thus every vote must be counted efficiently, effectively, and timely. Accordingly, to fulfill the organizational performance goal of Tulare County's strategic business plan, a comprehensive reorganization of the Register of Voters is proposed. This slide will provide the essential background information for the Register of Voters. Pursuant to Section 26802.5 of the Government Code, the Board of Supervisors is vested with the authority to appoint the Register of Voters. Resolution Number 97004, in effect, appointed the Tulare County Auditor Controller by name as the Register of Voters. Currently, there is an increasing importance associated with the electoral process at every level of government. Because of that, a comprehensive reorganization of the Register of Voters is performed, and as such, it is necessary to establish a Department of the Register of Voters. As we establish a Department of the Register of Voters, there will be a fiscal impact. So currently, in the fiscal year 1617 adopted budget, there is an existing budget in the Auditor Controller's Office of the Elections Division. And that includes $2 million of total appropriation budgeted and $2 million of total revenue, excuse me, total revenue of $1.3 million. We are proposing to transfer the existing election budget to the new established department and the existing related positions, which total 8.53 full-time employees, to the newly established department. With the new department, a Register of Voters position is necessary, is necessary to be allocated. The salary range proposed for that position would be $76,342 to $114,512. I have a table on the next slide... I have a table on the next slide that'll break out the neighboring counties that we researched in the salary survey. The additional cost, which is key, I wanted to point out that $77,075 will be funded from the CAO's miscellaneous administration budget, and that's essentially to cover the position for the remaining of the fiscal year. So there will be no net county cost in creating this new department. With the establishment of the new department, it was necessary to provide a budget for the department head at an identified salary range. Therefore, a salary review was conducted, which surveyed the neighboring counties. The neighboring counties included were Fresno, Kern, Merced, Madera, and Kings. Increasingly, in our review, we found this position to be blended with other duties of the Assistant Department Head or Department Head functions. Major goals in setting the salary range is to recognize innovation and reform is necessary and needed. In addition, a great deal of time is required to perform and conduct the strategic management plan. As you are aware, with our new CAO on board, department heads are required to follow the business model, which takes a lot of resources to accomplish. And this is with all of those different aspects involved, this is how we came up with that salary range of $76,000 to $114,000, which is determined for your consideration. The next step in creating a department would be to appoint an interim Register of Voters. Based on the extensive and proven qualifications, it is recommended that Michelle Baldwin, Chief Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, be appointed as the interim Register of Voters and authorize an acting pay at a 10% increase of her existing salary for an annual grand total of $81,603. From our strategic business plan, this includes the organizational performance goal, which emphasizes continuous improvement of organizational effectiveness and fiscal stability. These are key elements in how the CAO's office is looking at departments and looking and structuring and moving forward. The CAO's office will conduct a strategic management review of the Register of Voters and return within 90 days with recommendations to your board. The review will include an analysis of organizational structure, process, and resources. Finally, the acknowledgements. I would like to thank the board for your direction and your support during this entire process. The County Administrative Office, not only Mr. Spada, but my County Administrative Staff, that was key in helping me finish this presentation, their dedication and assistance is greatly appreciated. Human Resources and Development for their assistance and guidance also in the salary surveys, and also County Council. I'd like to thank them all. Mr. Chairman, if you would bear with me as I read into the record the following requested actions. Establish the Department of Registered Voters. Allocate one position of the Register of Voters effective December 20th, 2016. Adopt a new job classification and compensation for Registered Voters at will effective December 20th, 2016. Authorize the Register of Voters, including the interim Register of Voters, to have full authority as allowed by law, including but not limited to budget authority, to implement the functions and operations of the office. Two, appoint Michelle Baldwin as interim Register of Voters. Authorize acting pay at a 10% increase to existing salary with a total annual amount of $81,603. And to continue, approve the transfer of the Auditor Controller election-related positions to the Department of Registered Voters. Direct the County Administrative Officer to conduct a strategic management review of the Register of Voters office and return within 90 days of this action to the Board of Supervisors with recommendations. Authorize the necessary budget adjustment per the attached AUG 308 for fifth vote required. Approve the attached personnel resolution adding one full-time employee, Register of Voters, and approve the attached class specification resolution. So, thank you for your consideration and the requested actions. I'm here to answer any questions.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
I just wanna thank Mr. Spada and Sophia. Thank you for bringing this item to the board as quickly as you did. I know the request was made in the second meeting in November, and here we are already with a proposal on how we can move forward and have a more effective Register of Voters office. I think that the proposed action is great, and it gives us 90 days to have sort of a trial period and to really formulate a formal plan as to how this is going to move forward. And I can think of no better person to provide the needed skill set for this department than Michelle. So congratulations, Michelle. I think you'll do an outstanding job.
I agree, but I'm just looking at your expression.
She's shy, Steve, you know that.
Well, and that's what the whole idea here is, the next 90 days is to dig in and look at this department and bring it to the expectations of what it should be from the board perspective, from all the citizens of Tulare County. I never had so many calls as this last election, and let's hopefully, we're gonna get away from that, and I know we will, if we dig deep enough into this and get it organized and heading in the right direction, I can see that it'll be a fine-run organization.
I agree.
Supervisor Ashida.
Mr. Chairman, this department, it's not really a department now, but the Register of Voters has always been the stepchild of every organization. And when we placed it with the Auditor's Office, when Jim Allen was the Auditor, it was something that really doesn't fit into his department, and it doesn't really fit into the department it sits in now, the Auditor Treasurer Controllers, General Office Duties. I've watched this happen in Fresno County, too, and it seems that in many counties, this is just a separate entity that does a separate function that gets placed in places where it doesn't belong. And I think it's about time we brought it out and put it on its own. When I ran for office 13 years ago, I could not get a district map of District 1. I did not know the boundaries of District 1 within the city limits of Visalia. I was with a person this Saturday that went to vote, and Lindsey, and they ran out of ballots, and they told him to drive to Visalia. And he drove to Visalia to cast his vote. I think it's just a time after 13 years of watching this and being part of it, that we just need to bring it out and have its own separate department so we can really manage that department.
I'm very supportive of this, wondering if there's any public comment that might be-
No, is anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Ignah?
Mr. Chairman, before the board, votes on this matter, I would recommend considering amending item number two of the requests. Instead of authorizing acting pay of 10%, authorize the interim Register of Voters' annual salary to be $81,603. And this is because we wanna make sure there's a division between the relationships of the clerk and the new director.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem doing that, but does that represent at least a 10%?
Yeah, that's the exact amount.
Oh, very much, okay. I would move approval.
Mr. Spada.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chairman, Board, I just wanna say something very briefly. Thank you for your support in order to get this done at an accelerated rate. As you know, the right to vote is critical in our democratic form of government, and I wanna thank you for that drive in order to get this done. I also wanna thank you, Sophia, and your staff for working virtually around the clock to get this done. And I wanna thank you, Michelle, your qualifications are outstanding, and you're the right person at the right time to get the job done. So thank you.
We have a motion by Supervisor Worthy. I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Supervisor Worthy, second by Supervisor Vanderpool.
Including the-
I mean, with your correction.
Right, with your correction. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous, thank you. Okay, Mr. Supervisor Ashida will be leaving us now, and we will go to our first timed item.
Merry Christmas.
Take care. Item number three. Agriculture Preserve Diminishment Number WAC 1602 for diminishment of portion. Agriculture Preserve Number 141, Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Mike Washam, Tulare County RMA. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. CAO, County Council, and Miss Registrar. Today, we have, today we have a ag diminishment public hearing. This is for, just to set the stage, this is a finale, the final step in a Williams Act cancellation process. We've already, this is for a Dollar General in Poplar. The building permits, I believe, have already been submitted. So I just walked through the timeline. This is for a diminishment of a 125-acre parcel, contract number 4119, consisting of 1.3-acre parcel owned by Embry Asset Group. And as I said, this is for a Dollar General ultimately. They filed a partial non-renewal back in December of 2015. February, your board considered a tentative cancellation, and then they fulfilled those requirements, paying their cancellation fee, and the final ag cancellation certificate was issued on November 30th of this year. This to appease District 3 Supervisor, I do have the numbers because he's a numbers guy. The cancellation fee was $46,625 submitted to the state. That was based on an assessment of a fair market value of $373,000 for the 1.3-acre site. This is a map identifying the location of the site that will now be coming out of the ag preserve. And that concludes staff report. I would recommend for the board to hold a public hearing, approve the cat exempt for this, direct the Environmental Assessment Officer to file the notice of assumption and approve this act.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question, but I just have to make the comment that I'd always do with these cancellation fees about how repugnant it is every time this happens, because the money goes to the state of California. It is the county that takes the loss of revenue to enforce, to allow the Williams Act contracts to exist in Tulare County. We reduce our property taxes because of that. It is we who should benefit from these cancellation because we're the ones who've suffered the losses, and I find it wholly repugnant and inappropriate that the state continues to siphon the money out of Tulare County, and I'll finish with that.
Well, maybe we get Supervisor Ashida as our governor, we can get that taken care of. Supervisor Cox.
Mr. Chair, amen. And I'm wondering, did the appraiser come out of downtown San Francisco? $300,000 for value for an acre of land in Poplar. Really? Come on.
Process is-
You don't need to answer that, that's just absolutely ridiculous.
It's on the 190 corridor.
I don't care where it's at.
Manhattan.
Okay, any other comments? Not, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Supervisor Worthy, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. The vote is four, and Supervisor Ashida being absent, so carries. Carries, okay. I will go to item number four, which is amendments to Tulare County Ordinance Code pertaining to speed limits.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. CAO, Mr. Sims, happy holidays. Free Chankey with the Resource Management Agency. With this item, we are requesting a modification to our county ordinance in regards to speed limits. As a little bit of background, if you recall back to driver's ed training, you'll recall that certain regions, such as residential areas or rural roads, have unposted speed limits, residential being 25, rural roads being 55, for examples. The state gives us some discretion or a little bit of authority at the local region to modify those speed limits as where warranted. The process to do that is a speed survey, so every five years, we go out and measure the speeds of the actual traffic moving along the roadway, review accident records, roadside conditions, and then we set the speed limit at the 85th percentile of the measure. So 85% of the people traveling on that road will be going slower than the speed that we are required to set the speed limit at. Beyond that, we are given a little bit more discretion to reduce that speed slightly further when warranted. These are considered speed zones per California Vehicle Code, section 627 and 22358.5. Generally, we can reduce that by about 5 miles an hour. These speed zones are documented in county ordinance, and so with this action, we'd be requesting that you change these ordinance. Few of the locations here that we're talking about, Avenue 95, we're reducing from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour in Terabella. In Pixley Court Avenue, another 5 mile an hour reduction, and in Terabella Avenue, from 50 miles per hour to 40 miles per hour. In Three Rivers on Cherokee Oaks Drive, a reduction from 35 to 25 to more accurately represent the residential nature of the roadway. In Tulare on Addy Avenue, we've got the prima facie, that's that unposted 55 mile an hour speed limit on Addy Avenue, so we post that at 40 miles an hour. In Sultana, another prima facie 55, reducing it to 40 miles per hour. And then, due to some recent annexations by the city of Porterville, these are roadways that are currently in our speed zone ordinance, we're removing two, they've been annexed into the city, and then changing the limits on that. With that, I'd request you hold a public hearing to see if anyone has any comments, and then ultimately waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance, pending Article 3 in Chapter 1, Part 3 of the ordinance, and direct the clerk of the board to publish a summary.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I was told to ask a question for Supervisor Anis. How come you're not increasing the speed limits in certain locations? It's only decreases. He likes to drive faster rather than slower.
If you give us a list of the roads, we can take a look at it.
Believe me, he was driving slower this morning, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Suppressed by Supervisor Cox.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous with Supervisor Ashida not being present. Okay, we will move to our untimed items. Item number 34.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, County Council, Jason Britt, Associate, Agency Director of HHSA, and I'm just really briefly here today, we're bringing before you essentially what is, we're asking to create an advisory committee, we're calling it a task force, to address homelessness at the county level. In 2016, there were 631 homeless persons in Tulare County. You can see the percentage breakdown by major sort of cities there. This is an issue that requires cross-jurisdictional collaboration, and so we're hoping that as a part of this discussion and task force, that we can get that cross-collaboration between the cities, the county, the nonprofits, and the faith-based organizations. So essentially, we will look at all of the service providers, we will look at all of the system and try to make improvements where we can. So with that, I would ask that you form a task force to address homelessness in Tulare County. We would invite a cross-sector of stakeholders, we would engage county departments, municipalities, current- current providers in the nonprofit sector, including faith-based organizations and law enforcement, to help us tackle the, and to reduce homelessness in Tulare County. This is a, sort of a listing of the proposed members of that task force, and we would hope that we would get participation from all of those areas. And with that, I would ask you to establish the Tulare County Task Force on Homelessness, adopt the bylaws, and direct the clerk to post a list of vacancies in accordance with the Matty Act. Any questions?
Quick question, the 631 countywide seemed low, knowing that there were encampments with 150, 200-plus in Visalia and Porterville alone. How do we identify that 631? 631, are those self-identifying homeless?
The Kings Tulare Homeless Alliance conducts the annual point-in-time survey, which we participate in. Essentially, it's that. We, they actually go out and find people, and so these are the number of people that we're able to find and that identify as homeless. So, there could be more that we're, we're not finding, or more who don't identify, but that's how that number is derived, and that is the process that has been used by many jurisdictions around the country and the state.
Thank you.
Supervisor Vandepool?
Thanks for bringing this item forward, Jason. I think that there's a tremendous need in this county and also in the state. In Tulare County, I know that we see it more prevalent in the larger population centers, certainly in Visalia. And Visalia as a city has their approach to addressing homelessness, and Tulare may have a different approach, and Porterville may have a different approach. I think that this gives a very good forum for those discussions to take place, and hopefully collaborative efforts with resources being put on the table, ideas, approaches, and we might be able to be more effective in how we address and provide services to the homeless population. So, I'm very supportive of this. I think it's going to be very, very effective.
Supervisor Worley?
Brit, I'm just curious about, you know, there, there's not a week doesn't go by, news clippings that you'll read a report about homelessness will be, homelessness will be eliminated in five years, you know, I've been reading those for 20 years, and obviously the problem persists. So, but my point really was there, I assume that there are many, many, many models that have been tried throughout California, across the country, and, and so there must be some best practices that have been effective. And I realize, as you say, it's a complex issue, and it's not one size fits all, either for locations or for people, but this is certainly something which is needed, and we are supportive of it, and, and, you know, if we can get families to, to not be homeless, it's a great, it's a great job. We should always be trying to do that, and, but it is a struggle, because sometimes people choose to be homeless, and sometimes they don't. And those who are there by virtue of mental capacity issues, or change of circumstances and so forth, you know, we want to try to assist those folks the best we can, so I think it's a great, great process.
We like to talk about as reducing homelessness. It's really not going to eliminate it, but we could try to reduce it, and that's our hope with the task force, is we can look at those different models, look at what's out there, and see if there's something or a combination of something that can help us here. I do believe there might be members of the public, Mr. Chair, that might come to this.
Okay, I was going to do that as soon as everybody got...
Now, this is very timely. I know this was, Warren Guber was voted in as mayor last week, and that was one of his issues he wants to address, and so I think we're playing right into one of the largest concerns several of our larger cities are having. So, the timing is perfect on this, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Anyone out in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue?
Mary Iskarsen, I'm the Executive Director of CISA, the Anti-Poverty Agency in Tulare County. Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. Certainly, CISA has been working on this with the city of Visalia and those task force, but as an agency, we have been certainly looking forward to the opportunity to work countywide. We can't address the quality of life of folks living in our community without really looking at it regionally. So, for us, we certainly look forward to the opportunity to support this task force any way we can, with resources, but also sharing those best practices that we've learned thus far. So, I look forward to the opportunity to work with Jason and other folks on that task force, if that does come to fruition. So, thank you for hearing us, and thank you for supporting this definitely needed task force.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Board. Joe Russell, farmer, Tulare County Farm Bureau. We would like to see that added, that maybe the Tulare County Farm Bureau could be added to this task force. We have a big stake in it too, as farmers, because a lot of them impede on, on farmer property, and anybody that knows anything about farming, we have Global Gap and Gap and Primus, and, and it becomes a real issue for the farmer, not only for their concerns, but the safety of the homeless. It would be nice to see that we're taking a proactive approach on this, and that in the future, that maybe we could even make this a pilot program for the state of California. I, I agree with, I don't remember if Pete or Steve said it, that, you know, 651, I think I can find that many in just Visalia, you know? And, and it's, it's statewide, if it's not nationwide. So, we would just like to take that into consideration, also having the DA and the Sheriff's Office involved in that, because I think they can give us a lot of good input and, and resources on that too. Thank you.
Case your concerns, thank you.
Chairman Anis, Supervisors, my name's Eric Frost, I'm the Deputy C. Major for Visalia. I'm here because, as we looked through the agenda, we wanted to express our support and really want to be working on this. Every year, the city does a citizens advisory committee survey of citizens in Visalia, and the issue that keeps coming up and has grown over the last five years, where five, 10 years ago wasn't there at all, was homelessness. It is identified as citizens is the one item they wish the city would work much more on. And so, we, in full partnership with you, look forward to working with that and bringing whatever resources we can, because this is something that our citizens are worried about. So, thank you for taking the leadership and moving forward that, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you for those comments. Well, we need to take all that into consideration, and anybody that wants to come on board, be more than welcome, I would think so.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further comment, I would move approval of the proposal, and I would add to the task force members, Tulare County Farm Bureau as a member. Second that.
By Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous with Supervisor Ashida being absent. Okay, we'll move on to item number 35, receive the Millennium Fund Investment Program report. Sophia.
Your matter before you is the Annual Millennium Fund Investment Report. This year, the fund increased from 55.3 million to 55.7 million. To highlight earlier this year, your board approved a disbursement of 3.5 million from the Millennium Fund, which was helped to, which has helped to use the county's capital improvement plan. In particular, the 3.5 million was used for the property and evidence building to help our law enforcement friends. I would like to introduce Ken Sheeble, Managing Director of PFM Asset Management, who is PFM's Head Strategist, and he's been working in the public sector of PFM for over 20 years.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spata, County Council. I'm here to present the annual update to the Tulare County Millennium Fund Investment Program. A little bit of history, the county in 1999 issued $45 million of variable rate demand notes to fund an endowment program to provide long-term funding for public capital improvements. The way the program was structured, it's essentially self-funding and self-sustaining through the use of the county's share of tobacco settlement receipts from the master tobacco settlement from a number of states around the country, including California, and the county gets its respective share of those funds on an annual basis. Those original variable rate bonds were refunded in 2006 to essentially simplify the program and reduce fees, and it's been a very successful program, really since its inception. The current borrowing rate, as of the end of November, was 0.87%. It is a variable rate, which means it will move up and down with short-term interest rates, but that's quite an attractive rate by historical standards. The program, long-term objectives, initially to achieve and maintain parity, that means that we want the fund balance itself to be sufficient to pay off the outstanding bonds, if that were an option to be considered, to generate an investment return higher than the borrowing rate on the bonds, and to carefully control risk to ensure a safety of principal in the program. I'll talk mostly about the annual program year from April 1 of 15 to April 1 of 16, but of course, bring the board up to date on market circumstances since then as well. Interest rates in that program year were mostly stable in 2015 until the very end of the year, when they did begin to rise, and then earlier this year in 2016, they fell at the beginning of the year due to some concerns over the global economic conditions, and then uncertainty around the Brexit vote in the UK, and then uncertainty headed into the US presidential election. Most recently, we've seen interest rates move sharply higher post-election, along with stock prices, for example, and we've also seen the Federal Reserve raise rates again just last week for the, only the second time, the first time coming in December of last year. The investment strategy for the Millennium Fund portfolio, the primary objective is to protect the principal in the program, and then secondarily, to grow the market value of the program over time, to ensure that it can meet the, the purpose for providing, for appropriations for public capital projects to be used here in the county. Our strategy continued to focus on carefully managing the risk of the investments in what was a very historically low interest rate environment, and one where interest rates were likely at some point, which we've just seen recently, to begin to move higher over The chart on the left shows the borrowing rate on the outstanding bonds. They're tied to a short-term index, a one-month LIBOR. The actual borrowing rate is a quarter percent over one-month LIBOR, so you see the history of that rate over the past couple of years in red. It remains a very low rate, but in contrast to investment yields available in the marketplace, which we show on the right, represented by the two-year treasury note yield, the, really the two-year treasury note yield had about the same yield available as the borrowing rate. So, historically, we've used a strategy of taking advantage of opportunities in somewhat longer investments the past couple of years. That really hasn't been an option, and if we had done that, we thought that that would have represented perhaps an increase in market risk as well, in an environment of low rates where rates were likely to increase. So, we have shifted the strategy over the past couple of years from longer-term fixed-rate instruments, and by longer term, I still mean relatively shorter term, but compared to the borrowing rate, two- to three-year type maturities, into primarily floating-rate type investments. The value of the fund, as of April 1, 2016, $55.7 million. It did fund appropriations of 2.5 million in the 2015-16 program year, and recently funded 3.5 million in the 2016-17 program year. In addition, the program received its annual settlement proceeds of 3.8 million dollars. That amount, as was mentioned earlier, is up about 400,000, the total balance since last year. If we look at the history of appropriations, in total, the program has funded over $46 million of appropriations since its inception, and again, that's self-funded from the tobacco settlement receipts that come into the program and are used to fund the appropriations, as well as cover all the interest costs and expenses of the program. A key metric for measuring the success of the program is what we call the unwind position. The blue line in the chart represents the aggregate fund balance in the program. The red line represents the outstanding principal balance of the bonds that are still outstanding under the program. The amount of bonds outstanding does get reduced each year through principal payments that occur once a year. The ultimate payoff and final maturity of the bonds is 2034, so there's still a number of years to go on that, but you'll see as the principal is paid, the outstanding amount of bonds is reduced over time, whereas the fund balance in aggregate continues to grow over time. So, that difference between the fund balance and the outstanding bonds is the favorable unwind position. As of April 1 of 2016, that was 20.1 million. That's up $1.2 million from the prior program year where it was 18.9 million. So, the program continues to widen that unwind position, meaning that there's additional funds available to continue to grow the principal balance in the program. A key objective of the investment strategy is to invest at a yield in excess of the borrowing rate. So far, since inception of 1999 through April 1, the investment return has exceeded the borrowing rate by 0.36%. That allows for some compounding of interest in the program, which is beneficial to add incremental value to the program. As I noted earlier, the strategies that we used over the past couple of years have been to focus on floating-rate corporate debt instruments. We select floating-rate instruments because their interest rate, their return will float with short-term rates comparable to the borrowing rate, which will also float with a short-term rate. So, they will move somewhat in tandem, and if we can achieve a higher yield on the investments, then the borrowing rate, and then the program will continue to grow through compounding. The cumulative growth of the market value of the fund program over time has grown by a little over $11 million since inception. Again, initially, under, just under 45 million, now it's grown to over 55 million, as we've seen. So, again, the balance continues to grow as the outstanding bonds themselves have shrunk in outstanding principal value. This is a detailed chart of all the ins and outs of the program. The program does get annual receipts from the tobacco settlements, pays both expenses, principal, as well as the appropriations, which are under the county's control, and then you see the ending market value balance there. One of the initial objectives of the program was to grow and create ultimately an endowment of about $70 million. The program is moving in that direction. Given the current cash flows in the program, last year, for example, the $3.5 million of appropriations will about spend the money that's coming into the program. So, while it is self-funding and self-sustaining, if the county continues to appropriate that amount, it'll be a challenge to continue to grow the balance significantly, based on the existing assumption of continuing the appropriations at that $3.5 million level. We estimate it would take somewhere between 24 and 28 years to get to the 70 million principal balance, at which time, there would be essentially no principal of bonds outstanding, you'd have just the endowment fund itself, which could then be used in perpetuity to fund capital projects. If the appropriations were reduced on an annual basis, of course, that would allow the fund to grow more quickly. As an estimate, if the appropriations were reduced to $2.5 million, the program would reach $70 million balance in about 15 years. So, it does have a very significant impact on that. The other key element here, which is a significant amount of uncertainty, is simply the interest rate environment. We've been in a very low-yield environment since the financial crisis of 2007 and 2008. If we were to continue to see increases in interest rates over the next few years, to get anywhere back to what would be considered more normal short-term interest rates, that would also help through compounding, grow the principal balance of the, of the program, and could accelerate the point at which it would achieve the $70 million target. The portfolio itself is well-diversified amongst the different investment sectors in the upper right, focused primarily on high-quality corporate notes, as well as high-quality short-term commercial paper, which is short-term corporate debt, some agency-backed mortgage-backed securities, and other federal agency securities. This is as of 30th. The maturity, distribution goes out to about... The maturity distribution goes out to about three or four years, but as we'll see in a second, the floating-rate nature of those investments means that they have far less market risk than a fixed-rate investment out to that maturity range would be. And the credit quality remains very, very high. The corporate securities in the portfolio are very well-known names like Cisco, Apple, Berkshire Hathaway, Johnson &amp; Johnson, very, very high-quality credits, as you can see from the distribution of credit quality. This chart compares the maturity distribution that we just saw in blue to what we call the duration in gray. The duration is a measure of the interest rate sensitivity of those investments, meaning how much would its value rise or fall if interest rates change. A rising rate environment is a threat to the value of fixed-income investments like corporate bonds. And so because we focus primarily on floating-rate instruments, they have very, very limited sensitivity to changes in interest rates. If rates move higher, the coupons on those instruments will move higher in tandem, and so they don't lose value like a long-term fixed-rate bond would. And so again, just the contrast between the maturity and the interest rate sensitivity. The portfolio has a good yield on it today, but has very, very little interest rate sensitivity, which is a change that we put in place a couple of years ago because of the low-rate environment and the threat that rising rates could impair the market value of the program. Just a quick look at the nature of the purchases that were made in the 2015-16 program year. Again, you'll see the bulk of the purchases were either in short-term commercial paper, short-term corporate debt, which again has a shorter maturity and very little interest-rate risk, or in a longer-term floating-rate corporate securities, again with maturities that are a little bit longer but have a very limited interest-rate risk. Looking ahead, we have seen a significant spike in interest rates post-presidential election. We think that has the potential to continue. If we look at the forecast of a variety of economists put together by Bloomberg, the general market consensus is for interest rates to continue to move gradually higher, for the Federal Reserve to continue to raise rates gradually, but perhaps an additional two or three-quarter percent moves in 2017. So the strategy will reflect the potential and the likelihood for interest rates to continue to move higher, which means generally following the same strategy we've been using the past few years to keep the interest rate sensitivity low. The chart on the right shows the benefit of commercial paper and corporate, short-term corporate credit relative to treasuries or government securities. And there is, in today's market environment, excellent yields available on short-term credit, high-quality, so there's not a lot of credit risk, but significant incremental yield relative to government security options. So looking ahead, the strategy will continue to emphasize short-term credit and floating-rate corporate notes. We do expect rates to rise, so we'll be focusing on managing the interest rate risk embedded in that, certainly look to capitalize on opportunities as we have over the years to do that. Because interest rates have risen, there's a little bit of an opportunity to consider longer-term investments, but we think it's premature for that to again focus more on risk management. And we'll certainly continue to actively manage the asset allocation of the program to maximize its benefit while carefully managing risk and protecting the principal value of the portfolio. Any questions?
Questions? I think Steve was probably the only one on the board when this was initiated, but what a great investment program and foresight of that board at that time to take those tobacco funds where many counties squandered them and spent them all over the place, Tulare County didn't. So hats off to the board members, Steve.
Well, and I thank you. I was glad to be a part of the team because obviously I just got onboard and this was already in creative form. But one thing I was going to say, it's a little bit like, you know, having your cake and eating it too, because we have been able to do so much with the funds that we have received. And in many instances, but for the Millennium Fund, we had no money to repair roofs and our buildings and just basic necessities. And so it's very helpful for the county to do that. And then to build this sum of money, so in perpetuity was the goal of the board, and to see that we're still moving in that direction in a positive way is very encouraging. And thanks to PFM for their good services over the years. And of course, we took a very conservative approach, you know, in terms of estimating our returns, and that was a good thing because it's been a very challenging time through most of this period of time because of what interest rates have done. I think initially, we thought there'd be much greater opportunities with huge, larger spreads between longer-term investments and borrowing rates or loaning rates on our own. But it still has worked out because we were conservative, and it's been very, very helpful. So I'm glad we did it this way. Other counties didn't necessarily squander them, but they maybe did one project where they would take, they would take the funds and sell off their rights essentially to receive the settlement dollars in exchange for a particular project. I think Fresno County did that for their child welfare department, or I'm sorry, their probation department. But anyway, I think, I think the approach that we've taken here has been very helpful for the county from a short-term and from a long-term perspective. So thank you for your report today.
Supervisor Cox? I heard a couple of key things here. First, though, folks need to understand this is not a slush fund. This, you know, this is a dedicated fund. It's worked very well for the entire time it's been in place. My first question when I came onboard, I want to see what the unwind is. You know, if we were just to kill this, what would we get out of this? And it's, it's great to see the numbers. I love looking at the numbers. You know, the value, 55 million, unwind, 20 million. And you also said if we were to continue drawing down at the 3.5 million level, it would end in 20, 24 years, whatever you said. Well, I'm doing 20 times 3.5, 70 million plus unwind. You know, as we continue to follow the program, taking our draws and conservative draws, because there's times we left a million dollars on the table, only take the money when we need it, be conservative about this, that 20 years could turn into many more years. So I'm excited about this. It gives a good, solid, steady, reliable stream of money to do things that we've been talking about, the fixing the roofs, you know. As I'm transitioning over to the city of Visalia, they're looking at roofs that haven't been repaired, air conditioners that haven't been replaced, and they look at the replacement fund, and the replacement fund is zero. So this has been a very good program for the county, and I would just say to everyone, hands off. Let's leave it alone. So no questions, but thank you. You guys are doing a great job managing this fund.
Mr. Spata? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Very briefly, thank you, Ken and Sophia, for your excellent presentation, as well as PFM's prudent fiscal management with respect to a very important financial program of this county. But what I wanted to really say is I want to thank this board for its leadership, its conservative stewardship, and, most importantly, its open transparency with regard to a prominent financing program of this county. The observation that I would like to make, the empirical observation I would like to make, is that over time, this financial program has grown a little over $11 million and still supported actual appropriations of a little over $46 million that have gone to the improvement of the capital project program of this county. Well done. It's a privilege to work with you.
Thanks for that report.
Drive safely back to San Francisco. Is Lauren still with your company?
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, tell her we miss her.
I will certainly pass that along.
Is this an action item to receive the report? Okay. Okay, let's move on to item 36, Request from Resource Management Agency to Approve Amendment to Agreement, High-Speed Rail Authority.
Good morning again, Reed Chankey with the Resource Management Agency. These next two items, both 36 and 37, are ultimately mechanisms that allow us, the county, to be, to bill the High-Speed Rail Authority for our staff time and to be reimbursed for that time. But before I ask for your consideration and approval of these two agreements, I wanted to give a quick status update on the High-Speed Rail project. You'll recall, we have three general agreements, the master agreement, cooperative agreement, and utility agreement number one, that are already in place. These kind of are the umbrellas that describe the actions the High-Speed Rail Authority will take and our responsibilities in that process. Subutility agreements get into a bit more detail, specifically the improvements that the High-Speed Rail Authority will be making on our behalf before the rail comes through. So these are the road improvements. The requested amendments and then the new agreement are an amendment to 101 through 109. This one is an additional amount of funds to reimburse the county. And due to some delays associated with environmental issues, the High-Speed Rail Authority has asked us for an extension of time for those relocations, but they've guaranteed us that that'll happen before the impacts of the rail are in place. And in 201 through 2005, this is just another mechanism for the county to be reimbursed for office and fieldwork associated with the grade separation. So 101 through 109 is kind of the roadwork, and 21 through 25 is the over crossings. And then we do foresee another future agreement, a construction and maintenance agreement that we'll be bringing back to your board at a later date. So here, this slide just again summarizes those two agreements. The first is the amendment, and the second is a new agreement. So between these two, we're looking at about $255,000 more of reimbursable work that county staff will provide, and then the High-Speed Rail Authority will reimburse us for. In regards to the actual projects, you can see the map here that we've brought for you a couple of times. Road 24 and Road 40 are currently in process. They're in construction. We've stopped asphalt paving at the moment because of the weather, but they'll come back onboard and be completed in June. And then looking forward to next year, we've got a number of roads that will be reconstructed or improved. And then December 2018 and 2019, these two portions of the work require a little bit of extra rideaway, and then also a bridge construction, so the timeframe is a bit further out there. But again, these will be in place before the rail line is, impacts the traveling and the roadways. And then we do have grade separations. We've got five locations. They're currently at 30% design stage, and the Rail Authority is projecting a 2020 time period for construction completion. And with that, we do have some action on the ground. I think these are the first, within Tulare County at least, improvements that have been made by the High-Speed Rail Authority. So this is Road 24 back in November.
Looks like it's a pretty busy road.
Yep.
A busy area, I'll say. I know it doesn't exist yet, but busy area.
Exactly. You go back to the map, and they are going through some pretty remote sections of the county, but we did want to make sure that the roads would be improved, able to navigate through there when the rail does come through. With that, I'd be available for any questions?
Some of these are new roads, aren't they? If you had to do a frontage road to get to the next road?
Exactly.
That kind of looked like here was a new road.
That one was a widening and an overlay, but there are some new roads that are being constructed.
West of Alba, and you had to drive down the side of the road because you couldn't drive on the roads. It's pretty, pretty rough stuff out there. That's a year difference.
That's a nice compliment.
Thank you. You need to go out there and take a look.
Yeah, I was just, I don't think, there's never been a road of that quality in that location ever, I'm quite sure. And I want our staff to keep that in mind when they're allocating other road projects throughout Tulare County, how much work is being done in District 2.
And how much is being paid for by the county? Very little is being paid for by the High-Speed Rail Authority, and thank you for the innovation to make this happen.
And I was going to, I was going to follow up until I was interrupted by my colleague that Donald Trump would be proud of the negotiations that our staff did with the High-Speed Rail on this matter.
That's a great deal. Okay, before you take a vote, would somebody, anybody in the audience like to speak to this issue? Be glad to. Come on up. Seeing no one, then we'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I commend RMA for their innovation and look forward to riding the train and move for approval.
Now, is that for item 36 and 37?
36 and 37.
Oh, is this both of them? Okay, good. Okay, the motion made by Supervisor Van Pult, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous with Supervisor Ashida not being present. So that concludes our open session of the board. Do we have need for closed session, Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items A and E are off, and we will be going into closed session, items C, D, and F, and I do not expect an announcement on.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your presence today at our meeting. We will adjourn to closed session.